You're listening to In My Humble Opinion with Maxilia Robinson and Charles Lewis only on 1013 Jams.
I am HO Talk Show, Sir Charles, Ms. Max, Razor, A. A. Ron, still here in the booth in the building, y'all. What's happening? And as, as promised, we do have the second, the second hour of the show today. We are joined by no stranger to the Seaville airwaves, uh, brother Juan Diego Wade. What's up, brother Wade?
Greetings.
How you doing?
It's so nice to be with you all today. It's a beautiful day. So thank you for this opportunity.
Absolutely, man. So, brother Wade, um, out of all the things that you do that you've accomplished here in the city, you have, uh, decided to add to your stress level, huh?
Yeah. Funny.
So, Charles, um, you know, uh, last year, the beginning of the year, I was entering, um, the last year of my fourth term of the school board and, and I knew that I was not going to run for the school board again. I, I knew that it was time for new vision, um, new leadership, um, new breath of fresh air for the, um, school board. And I've, I've done it. And I was actually looking forward to relaxing, maybe, um, maybe getting on some more boards or, but when March hit and I had an opportunity to really, um, just do tons of walking in the community, different places and, and one of those walks, I actually was in the, um, somewhere in 10th and Page neighborhood. I remembered this day distinctly. I said, you know, gosh, I love this city. I care for this city. I want to continue to serve it. And the next logical step was for city council. And that's when I kind of began thinking about it, plotting it out and see what it was going to look like. But the next day, um, literally the next day, my wife and I went for the walk, on the walk. And that's when I asked the missus about, you know, that's, this is something I wanted to do because this is a family thing when you get into something like this. So I asked her because if mama said no, you know, I wouldn't be staying right there. And so she gave, she thought about a few days and, and, um, she gave me the green light and then I started reaching out to some, you know, close friends and said, you know, helping me plot this thing out.
Yeah, man. Well, thank you. Thank you for your continued service. So, uh, and I guess my first question for you is like, what is that gonna look like? Like what is it, you know, exactly? Um, you know, as far as the issues, you know, that the city is facing that you say, you know what? If my people elect me, I'm gonna hit the ground running doing this.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I think that one of the things that I can do and bring is, um, calm, steady, um, leadership. That's what I've been doing since I've hit this community over, um, 20, 30 years ago and, and, um, over the years, I've been given increased responsibility and leadership roles. And now I feel like I'm ready for this. I literally can feel like I can hit the ground running. I have a master's degree in urban environmental planning. Um, I know the, the planning process and for the last 10 years, I've been working, um, in the, um, economic, um, development, um, form and I know education. I know planning process. I have a great relationship with the, the University of, of Virginia. I know this community. And most important, I, I think I know the people and relationships. And I, I just feel like I can hit the ground running from, from day one.
Now that's key right there. Knowing the people and their relationships because with all the mess that goes on, brother, like, you know, I'm like, how you feel about it? How you gonna approach that? Like, uh, bringing, you know, some sort of, uh, unity?
Yeah, yeah. You know, that's something I've definitely been hearing as I have been out for the last few months talking to individual is that, you know, right now it seems is that there is a chaos going on, on council and, and I don't talk about specific things that's going on in current leadership because my position is I'm talking about my vision, my vision for Charlottesville. And I know that it's a lot that's going on that I don't know about. But what I can say that I will bring is, is respect, is respect for everyone, whether I agree or disagree with your position. And I think that if we start from that at the top, then everything will flow down from that. And I think that will flow down to other council members, to staff, to leadership. Uh, because I, I know that the city residents, that they are ready and they love this city. And I think with that in place, we have the foundation to move the city forward.
I'm kicking the razor. I think he had a question.
Yeah.
Or comment.
Hey, Juan, how you doing?
Hey, brother.
Yeah, um, you know, you know how I feel about you. You, you know, you helped me out in situations when you didn't have to. So, you know, I'm very, very appreciative of you. That being said.
I'm little coming.
Um, let's just cut to the meat and potatoes. We've had two very strong African-American candidates, one being a male, one being a female on city council, right? So for some people of Charlottesville, that has been what the black person in leadership is going to be and represent. Ever since I've known you, ever since I had the presence of Charles introducing me to you, you always seem to take the high road in everything that you do. You, you're very Obama-ish when you come to controversy type things, right? So, my question being, because you don't go at everything with like, that kind of zeal that would be considered confrontational, do you think that you will have any trouble relaying your message and getting people to see your way on this city council, the way it operates? With them not thinking that it's a weakness and, and seeing you as somebody who's trying to facilitate a middle ground?
Yeah. That's a, that's a great question. I definitely have, have heard that as I've been, I'm running and, and what I'm going, and what I say is that, you know, I am who I am, you know, I'm going Popeye on them, you know, I am what I am.
Well, you better know how to fight.
Yeah. And, and, um, I'm not going to kind of change my stripes to, you know, you know, to get, you know, votes or anything like that. But I think that I can look at my track record and, and see that I have accomplished a lot that I have, you know, um, and I don't see, you know, publicity and things like that. I, I, you know, I know how to get the deals done. And I don't believe that C, the, the C word is a compromise is a bad word. That, um, that, you know, sometimes you have to do that to, to get things done. And, and, um, you know, I, I can be, you know, that strong leader, that I think that this city needs, but you know, I'm, I am going to, you know, um, lead, um, like I have been in my other nonprofits and, and, um, you know, in my house and my job and things like that. So, um, you know, and, and I, I think that if that's who the residents want, then I will hopefully get their votes.
Yeah, yeah. You know, in, in saying it, like, like Razor even brings up, uh, you know, um, like a even maybe sharper point than even realize is that, like we are in this, in a lot of racial turmoil right now.
Yeah.
You know, and like, that's going to be a balancing act, you know? And I'm not even sure if I have a question more so than a comment and, and, and just sort of get your thoughts on it is, is, is like, you know, that there seems to be a black Seaville right now. And we understand, you know, like the white supremacy issues that have plagued, you know, the university, you know, um, being right here in the city. Like, so do you, I guess the question would be like, uh, do you fear not being black enough? In, you know, I'm like, like in opposition of it, it being, like it getting too black for some folks. You follow what I'm saying? Like, how do you balance that?
I, I do, you know? And I just have to say that, you know, I'm a 55-year-old African-American man. I grew up in Richmond, Virginia, the heart of the Confederacy. I think all of my schools that I went to was named after some Civil War hero, you know, at some point. It was before the movement and things. So, I went to Norfolk State, came here. And so I've, I've, you know, I've lived in all of the worlds and I'm living in it now. And I know what it takes. I've been pulled over, um, by police. I've been stopped in stores. I mean, I, I've lived everything that, that, you know, one possibly, um, could. Um, that, and that has helped shape who, who I am and, and how I make decisions. So it's not one black person that can be the spokesperson for all black people. I am an African-American man, 55 years old, rep, you know, and, um, love Charlottesville, represent Charlottesville. And, um, that's where I'm coming from. And I believe that I can move not only the African-American residents forward, but also the white and Hispanic, Latinx and, and all of the nationalities of, of this cities. I think I can move us all forward. And I think that that's what I am seeking to do.
Nice.
Hey, Charles, before, cause I, I can feel Max having some, a real good question here. Um, Juan, I got a question for you. You know what I'm saying? This is just one of those type things. I'm gonna talk to you like it's just us in the living room by ourselves, right?
Yes, sir.
With all the great things and all the struggle that Dr. Wes Bellamy did, went through, how do you keep non-black people from looking at every black candidate as the next Wes Bellamy? Not saying that he did anything wrong, but
Yeah.
he was unapologetic in his pursuit after what he wanted, his goals. He was very uncompromising in their eyes at times, right? So, I know that they lead, they lead and do things to us because of a lot of fear. How do you keep that from entering into your pursuit of going to, uh, city council?
Hmm. You know, I've been asked a lot of questions. I haven't been asked from that angle before. I think Wes Bellamy is a wonderful human being. So I'm jogging the, um, yesterday, they, they morning and I've worked with him since he stepped foot in, in this town. And so I think that my position would, you know, would be as far as how people were perceived me. I think that if someone is going to perceive, you know, Wes or me or anyone, one person, as they represent the entire nationality or race of that person, then I probably won't get their vote, their support anyway. And so, uh, again, I'm Juan Diego Ricardo Wade, an African-American with a Latinx name that was born and raised in Richmond, Virginia, came here for grad school, decided that I, like many people, that I love this city. And you know what? I'm going to make it my home and I'm going to try to make it a difference. And that's what I'm moving forward with the, the people that I'm targeting. I'm talking to a wide range of people. On any given day, I can talk to a single African-American mom or to someone who's possibly a black or white millionaire. And they all love and, and care for this city. Their concerns may be different, but I think as long as we have that as the base, we can, uh, I got something to work with there. I've got something to work with and we can move forward. I'm not going to go in and talk to, if I'm talking to someone black, say, you know, listen, this is what I plan to do or talk to someone white. My message to whoever I'm talking to is the same.
Okay.
And, and at this point, with my track record, everyone knows who I am. And so they know what they're going to get with me. And I'm, and I'm, I'm proud of that. And so if I try to flip the script now, they're gonna like, well, he's the typical politician or whatever. And again, um, um, brother Wes, he's done some wonderful things and I, I love him and, 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 you know, um, and, and hopefully after, um, if I get on the, they'll be able to say the same about me.
Nice, nice. Thank you.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna take a quick break. Uh, when we come back, Mr. Wade, we do want to get into your platform.
Yes.
Um, and what issues, uh, you know, you're, you're making a priority.
I am HO Talk Show, Sir Charles, Ms. Max, Razor, A. A. Ron, and we are joined this, uh, lovely hour, middle of the show, uh, with uh, city council candidate Juan Diego Wade. And can't forget about my brother also on the line with us, Elliot Robinson, chief editor over at Seaville Tomorrow. Appreciate everybody. Ms. Max, we'll kick it over to you.
So, uh, what Mr. Wade plans on, on doing if they vote him in? So let's just get down into, uh, what your platform is, sir. You're running as a Democrat, correct?
Yes, I am. And I'm happy to, I'm happy to report that, um, a lot of my, um, volunteers helped me get signatures and I did get my, um, um, required amount of signatures and I will be on the ballot as a Democrat on June the 8th. And so thank everyone for helping me with that. And one of the things I told many people as I was going out there, this is what I'm going to be fighting for when I get on council. One is criminal justice reform. And, um, second is affordable and workforce housing. Third is continue my effort with public education, which I've been doing for the last 15 or 16 years. Um, the fourth is, um, economic, um, development, which has been my job, um, for the last 10 years, working with the county and helping individuals in the community to seek and find jobs with employers to, um, to promote their business. And last is climate justice. And over all five of these areas would be, um, a veil of, of equity, um, done through a equity lens is what, it's something that we have been doing on the school board, um, for, um, the last, um, a few years. And so those are my five areas that I want to focus on. I can, um, you know, go in a little bit more detail with, um, all of those, um, if you would like, but one that has come up a, a lot is, the first is criminal justice reform. And my position on that is that, uh, you know, I don't, um, support, um, defunding the police. I think that that term has been thrown around. I've talked to a lot of people of all color and, and socioeconomic background, but I think that it's a lot that we can do. Um, um, to change the relationship between the police department and, and the community, particularly the community, um, of color. And, and whether it's some training, um, um, with the police department, de-escalation, um, tactics, um, and I, I feel that I can help bridge that gap. I've done some volunteer work with the police department, with the foundation, and have also, um, have deep, rich ties in all aspects of the community, in particular, community of color. And I think that, you know, again, I understand people, I understand the power of relationships and, and that has to be paramount, um, for that relationship, but I trust, um, to be there. Um, and I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I didn't mean to cut you off. Were you gonna go to the, to the next point? Cause I, I was just gonna, um, you know, sort of congratulate you on being that blunt about that answer because, because whether you agree or disagree with the, with the defund, to have a public official to just say, this is where I stand and not beat around the bush is actually refreshing.
Well, 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 thank you, thank you. And I know some, I've talked to a lot of people and they basically said in no uncertain terms that, you know, they want to call the police when things go bumping tonight. They want the police to, to be there. They understand. But they, in the same breath, they said, but, you know, talk about maybe some negative things that's happened to police. And so I just think that we need to have that, those courageous conversations. And I hope to be able to facilitate that and, and be the person that can do that.
Now, what about the, what about the reform idea of defund? Because I, like you said, sometimes the terminology gets mixed up, but the heart of that is more of a reform of saying that there's certain things that the police should be doing and certain things that they should not. Like, so how do you feel about the reform aspect of it?
It, it definitely so. And I, I don't know the exact percentage, but it's my understanding that I've read different information that when police are going through the police, uh, academy and things like that, that I don't know, up to 80% of their training are things like driving, how to shoot, how to fight. But once they get out in the real world, um, 80% of their, um, work is really on relationships, de-escalating. And so we just need to find that, that nice mix, um, um, so that, you know, um, uh, this community, I think that, you know, we need to value that relationship with the, the police department. I think it that, from what I'm hearing, that it still needs amending from 2017. And, um, and so, um, uh, we've started those conversations. We need to have, um, a, a lot more. And I think that the police department wants it, uh, and I think the community wants it. We need to have it. We need to have it because I think that we need each other.
Hey, Juan, you know, one thing that I noticed is that, uh, when you said that, that took me back to a thought that I'd had is that sometimes we don't, as a community, we don't utilize police in the correct way. Like you shouldn't be calling 911 when your cat is stuck up in a tree. You know what I'm saying? And but if you, if they don't come out there, then you're gonna complain that they not there when you call them, right? So it's a, it's a catch 22 if we are honest. Like as much as I hate to be honest in the situation, it is. It's damn if you do, damn if you don't in some situations, right? So as city council, right? When it comes to deciding what's best for, as a black man, on that, if you make it to city council, how difficult, honestly, will it be to decide what you need as from the black community as to what the city needs?
So I, I think that as part of the discussion that we need to have as a community is what role would that play in, in the, would the police play in the community? I think that as part of that, um, discussion that we have is that, you know, do we want some of the police officers to play that type of role, to play the role, uh, to come, uh, if they're in, um, a situation where you don't need, um, police officers that's armed and things like that, um, that, that is a role that they, that they can play. We need to have that, that discussion. Um, and, you know, I, I like to share this example. And I don't know all of the specific details, but I know certain last year that there was a young African-American man that was killed, um, at, um, I think it was a Wendy's in, in Atlanta. You know, I think that, you know, he, um, you know, I think there was call because he was sleeping behind a wheel. You know, again, you know, it could have been a medical, it could have been, um, that he was inebriated. I'm not sure. But in cases like that, you know, um, let's say that he, he was drunk and, and, and he needed to, um, and, and he fell asleep while he was waiting in line. That's, you, you know, hear different things. So, um, if you send the, the officer there that says, okay, why don't we park your car, call your Uber, tomorrow you come back and get your car, that, you know, hopefully that will resolve that case. There's no need to, you know, get, um, you know, and, and I think that, you, you know, we can look at other examples. Right now for the school department, um, the schools that, we're looking at, uh, uh, security resource officers and the role that they play. And we are, um, looking, changing the role of that. And we're looking at tons of different examples of different school districts around the country to change that, that role. Even though some of the kids have positive relationships with the officers, um, and, um, and but that has to, you know, it has to, but we're looking at that relationship. But it takes time. It takes a big group of people to look at and, um, um, determine what that would look like. And, and so that is, you know, but it takes time and you have to have trust that we're going to go through this process and look at the different, um, things that are going on and come up with a recommendation and hopefully a solution that the community will support.
But Juan, they have those. Aren't they called CSR's? You see them walking down on the downtown mall. So they're not, it's not that we need them, it's that they don't dispatch them. Because to my understanding, they ask you immediately, what is your issue? Right? So at that point, whoever the dispatcher is, should be deciding what level of officer to send because they already have, I, I could be wrong, but I think they're called CSR's. They have them on the back of their, and they don't have guns. So it's not something that we need to develop. I think it's something that city council needs to make, not an ordinance, but needs to say, okay, you have these, why aren't you not, you, it's like non-lethal force tactics. You have pepper spray, you have tasers. Why are you reaching for your gun?
Yeah. And, and all these things that, that right now that, you know, their lane is to do A, B, and C. And they may not have been trained to do these other things that the other officers are. And, and I, I'm learning these things as well, but I think that that will be part of it is that, that all officers, you know, will get trained in is these de-escalation tactics. And maybe as a community, if we decide that we want to invest more in those SRO officers, then that's what we'll, we'll do. And that's something that I will be committed to do because we have to get this right. Because, um, this is something that we all rely on in the community is that, that safety. Um, and, and most, and I'm trying to remember that most police officers' cars have on it to protect and to, to serve. Yeah, so.
Got to live by that, right? Hey, um, go ahead, Max.
Yeah. And another topic that you brought up, Juan, is the, um, affordable housing. And, and our mayor's been very vocal about affordable housing in Charlottesville not being as much of a priority as it should be, across the board in terms of, um, maybe how council views it or how developers, um, view it. And so what do you think you either bring to that conversation or help further that comp, that conversation so that Charlottesville is, is more equitable in that way?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, housing is, is essential. Um, we need to, you know, you know, it's hard for us as, as school, for example, to, to have a, a, a child to learn how to, to read if, if they don't have a, a, a steady place to, to lay their head. And so one of the things that I would recommend is someone who has been in the trenches as far as volunteering with Habitat and, and AHP and other places is that, that we will continue to support and invest all of the different areas that we have, um, done in, um, affordable housing, but also bring some partners along because we, uh, I believe that Charlottesville has had and showed us, showed us above our, um, surrounding localities. And, and so it's incentive for people to, to come to Charlottesville because we have all the programs right now. And, and, and so, and also one of the things that I have been able to assist with is that, um, the, the president, um, of the university, um, naming co-chair of the university community, um, um, working group. And one of the things is we recommend is housing, uh, impacted the, the university has on housing. And, and, and they, and recently they have committed to building up to 1,500 affordable units. Um, they're working on a location of that right now. And so that's the type of partnership, the type of, that we need to do. Of course, we can, we need to put more money into it. But there's so many other priorities as well. We need to, um, continue to invest in affordable housing. Um, of course, we have schools and, and other things as well.
Can I clarify that for me though, Juan? Like, so, so did you say that the university was, was, is, uh, is putting money into affordable housing?
They're still working out the details, but I think about a week and a half ago, maybe two weeks, they, um, there was an announcement that they were going to build up to 1,500 affordable units. I think within five years and they're working on a location will either be within the city or, or, or the county. And I think it's on, on some of their properties that they own. And so, um, that is something that they are, that we have, one of the recommendations that we made is that they have a working group specifically deal with housing and they're working on that detail now. And so, um, the, the university is a great partner to have in something like that because, um, you know, they're the big elephant in the room, if you will. And so I think that we have to get this housing thing straight because the house, the cost of housing is, is going up, um, so much. And, and, um, just walking in the Rose Hill neighborhood yesterday with, um, um, my wife and, and you see how it's, it's, it's slowly changing how, you know, maybe a house have been either remodeled or redone. And, um, you know, and we want investment in the city, but we want to keep the, the people who made Charlottesville, Charlottesville, we want to keep them here if they want to be here. And, um, and it's a real tough thing to do, but it takes investment.
Hey, Charles, now, I, does that deserve a hand clap? Because is it, well, this is where my mind went. And Juan, you helped me understand this. When you say 1,500 housing, are you talking about a project? Are you talking about breaking it up like five houses here, some land over there? Are you talking about carving out a new project?
Yeah. I mean, I would certainly hope not. Like I would hope it would be.
But is anybody asking that specific question? You know, I mean, you can call it apartments all you want. It's a project. If you grouping 1,500 people in one location from low income housing with that, with the troubles that they have generally from being disenfranchised, right? You're talking about another version of project.
So we gotta clarify the difference though between affordable and low income though.
Right, that's.
Because affordable doesn't have to turn into the project.
It doesn't have to, but if, if, if the structure is built, whether it goes there in six months or 16 years, that's what's being built. So somebody needs to ask, how are you building this? Are you taking seven blocks and building them straight up? Five stories high, 15 stories high? Everybody with point with 300 square feet of living space? That's a project.
Yeah.
I don't care what you call it.
Yeah. And then what the clap was for was, was UVA doing anything, putting their money where their mouth is. Like after the land grab that they have done in a way that they control the community. So if they're willing to help, that deserves an applause. And if that's being taken on.
But is that help if they're doing it that particular way? Or are they isolating you over so that you stay? Especially if they build it away from the college. If they build it away from the college, that's a project. I don't care if a black face is in front of it or a white face. That's a project.
And I want the university's money in the city.
Um, um, community input, but, um, I'm sure that there will be community input into that process as it moves allow, uh, moves about the, um, approval, um, process. So those are excellent questions. So I hope you got a recording of that, um.
No, don't put my name behind it, man. It's too late. I got, too late. I got charges pending, man. Don't make my life no harder than what it is.
I think Elliot had a question.
Elliot?
Yeah, yeah. My, my question is that a lot of these, uh, conversations we've been having, like, they really do revolve around race and equity. And that's something that the city council has been saying for years now that we're going to have this deep conversation about it. And it seems that every time we get close to it, it just never happens. Oh, I'm just curious about what, what are some of your ideas to finally get the real deep conversations that we need to have in this community to move forward? the real deep conversations that we need to have in this community to move forward?
Elliot, that, that's an excellent question. You know, over the last year, I'm sure that if you're a person of color, it's likely that you, and you have a, a, you know, a friend that's not, um, that's white or, you know, don't consider themselves a, a person of color, you've been asked your opinion on everything that's, that's going on. And so I've had this discussion. I've been part of numerous book groups, um, and, and, um, church events and things like that. So, and it's been very helpful. Um, and so I think that it has to be a couple of approaches, um, for that. One is that I think that I'm sure that we can hire some type of, or use current, um, energy within the community at low or no cost on how to engage large groups of people into it. Um, but also, but I think the most valuable, um, asset that we have is to have those one-on-one conversations, maybe you and two or three of your neighbors or friends to sit down and talk and say what it's like, uh, to go through what, what you've, um, um, been through, um. Uh, you know, I had this, this morning in my Sunday school class, we, we kind of delved in, into that. So I think that that's much more valuable, at least for me, at my approach than maybe a room with thirty or forty people, uh, type of thing. And so it just has to take different approaches. I think that the important thing is that you have those conversations because different people, maybe the younger, um, um, generation, they want to do it, some type of interaction on social media. But, you know, where they feel more comfortable. But whatever it is, I think that we have to have the conversation to understand what I've been through, what my plight is, and vice versa. Um, and we just, you know, I think that, that conversation is, is so, is so vital. So to wrap it up, Kelly, um, um, Elliot is, it's, we need to have it. I'm not sure what it will, what it should look like. That is something that we, um, if I'm fortunate enough to get on its council, we need to have as, along, uh, as well as with, with the public.
Now, you mentioned education a lot. What's your goal for the educational structure? And did you and Dr. Atkins plan on, plan this, you know, for those that don't know? For those that don't know, uh, the good, Dr. Rosa Atkins has announced her retirement as well, um, from, from her, uh, you know, seat as, as, as a superintendent of the city schools, you know, so, yeah, so, you know, um, props to Dr. Atkins for her work. But yeah, man, I'm like, how you gonna talk about that? Because we, both of y'all leaving? Like, that's gonna be a void, man. That's gonna be a void.
It, it is, it is. And so, um, no, I found out Thursday night after our joint meeting with city council, we went into closed session, you know, for personnel. We do that quite often. I thought it was like, you know, a principal or something else was leaving or we're hiring someone else. And it was really Kim as a surprise to me. I mean, um, I'm happy for her. She is, it's a tough job, in particular here in Charlottesville is really tough. And she has done it, you know, longer than anyone probably has in, in the state and in that position. Um, and, uh, and so I'm, I'm happy for her. She wants to spend more time with her, her grandkids and, and she wants to be called Nana. And, um, and I want to, and I'm happy for her because, um, she, um, she needs to well-deserve, um, rest. Um, I think you had another question.
Yeah, I was asking how are you gonna, um, you know, deal with that if elected, you know, as, as far as making that transition? You know, within the school system.
The schools, um, you know, I found out that when I got on the school board, how passionate people in this city, um, city, um, was. And when, um, I first got on in two thousand and, and, and five, actually, when I first got on, um, because we started, it was a May election, um, at the time. And people are very passionate about it, but what it, it has done for me for the last fifteen, sixteen years is allowed me to, to stay uniquely engaged, um, with the community. Because all parents, whether you white, black, rich, poor, or whatever, you are concerned about your child and their education. And I have been able to remain engaged with a wide range of the community and understand the, the importance of it. And so if I get on council, I will be able to, to know the importance of education and, um, um, when I get on. And, and I just think that, you know, allows me to understand to deal with a large budget, how to weed down and, and, and look at the different aspects of, because we give a, you know, um, um, I don't know, about a hundred-page detailed analysis of, of our budget. And, and so it allows me to, one of the things that allows me to hit the ground running.
Got you, got you. Man, um, thank, thank you for your time for joining us. But before we let you go, um, you know, of course, reminding people of the dates, uh, you know, of the, um, of how the community can be involved to, you know, if they choose to support you. But I definitely want to shout out the HBCUs while I got you too, if you have any word on that. Because that, because I know that you're a proponent of HBCUs and they are in the limelight now. Our, our kids are, are, are making cognizant choices to keep our talents and realize that they need us. We don't need them. In my humble opinion.
Yes. So, um, you can find out information about me at, at my website, juan diego wade dot, um, com. And June the eighth is the democratic election. I'm a graduate of Norfolk State University, urban environmental planning. There you can see I'm, hey, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm good to go. And, um, it's, it's just, it prepared me when I got into UVA with my graduate students from Ivy League schools, everything. I was ready to go. I didn't miss a beat. And so I, I'm glad to have that experience and, and, and I'm looking forward to hopefully to serve the city in the capacity of a city council.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Max.
All right. Yeah, thank you, Juan, for joining us.
Thank you.
You know, good luck on, on your run. Um, and, um, you know, we're, we're, we're supporting you, so.
Thank you so much. I appreciate y'all, this valuable asset that you have in, in, in the community. So bless you all.
Thank you, brother.